The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Media Services, the City of Oshkosh, or Time Warner Cable.
Everyone, welcome to I am Oshkosh. Cheryl Hens, Dan Rylandz here. On this edition, we're very pleased to be joined by the final two candidates for the Oshkosh Common Council. We're joined here tonight by Bob Peschel and Travis Swanson. We've already interviewed the other four candidates. Hopefully, you've had a chance to see those interviews that we've done with them. Again, by way of reminder, the primary is coming up on Tuesday, February 17th, one week from the date that you're seeing this show. And there will be six candidates emerging from that primary. One will be eliminated, and the remaining six will go on to the general election, which will be held on Tuesday, April 7th. So with that, thanks to both of you for being here. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Let's just dive right in and find out a little bit about both of you guys and why you're running for office, you know, why you want to get into this game of city politics at such a time in our history. Bob, go ahead.
You know, I have a history already of running for elected office in Oshkosh. I've run two other times. This is my third time. Taking a little time off since 2005, I became a father of two beautiful little boys.
Congratulations.
Take most of my time, besides work and that. But I built my life on, my adult life, on trying to make change in Oshkosh. I believe running for office is just another arm of that. And I believe that there's areas that could be very beneficial to all aspects of the population. So I'm running for responsible, sustainable development, running for quality services, strengthening of neighborhoods, because that's where our change really happens, is in our neighborhoods. And so, you know, and we need to move forward with open government. I think that's the premise of how change happens, is making sure that our government is transparent and held accountable for their actions.
Travis, what about you?
Well, my name is Travis. You know that, though.
I do.
And the main reason I'm running is I'd like to really see downtown revitalized. Downtown is very important to me. We have a very nice setup in our downtown. We have a lot of potential down there, but it seems like we see a lot of empty storefronts. We see a lot of small businesses closing because of the corporations coming into Highway 41 out on the west side. And I really think we need the city to come in and help these small businesses make it, rather than just pushing them aside and making way for the corporate America to come into the city.
Okay, good. Well, since you've brought that up, what are some of your ideas on how we can do that?
A few things that I think we can do is we could really help business owners by providing them a tax breaks for being downtown, and also providing incentives for remaining in the downtown area instead of moving out to the newer strip malls. And also by passing ordinances that could potentially make it more difficult for corporations, such as the Starbucks of the world, to come downtown. I mean, it's, cities need corporations, don't get me wrong. It's something we do need in the city. But it'd be nice to try and keep downtown the locally owned businesses and kind of keep the corporations out on the west side of the city, where they have been so far.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think we're at a point where we, where we also have to look at, in the sense, in the reality, that there's going to be a mix of all those, no matter what, no matter where we go. I mean, already, I mean, downtown Oshkosh already owns, already houses corporations, I mean, especially if we're talking about like, like a Blimpies. It's a corporate franchise chain. I have the same, some of the same sentiments regarding to corporations. But I also believe that we also need to work on downtown education about two business owners, about, you know, the challenges that it's going to take to stick through the changes that are taking place in downtown Oshkosh. So those incentives only go so far if there's no real strong education around running a law, a small business in Oshkosh. And I think that our chamber would probably agree a great, great amount that running small businesses is the, is the heart of what keeps Oshkosh going, and that their role should be and ought to be and maintain is the idea of education of business growth. So I agree with you. But I think that we're always going to have that mix and that balance of corporations now, just because, that's just the way that, that the path has gone, so.
How do we give them stick-to-itiveness if so much is tied to their bottom line? You know, they can only hang on for so long. I think that, you know, the, some of the business owners that we've seen down there, they've, they've really hung in for as long as they can. And, you know, when you're down to your last thousand bucks, you're down to your last thousand bucks. So how, how would we educate them in a way that would help sustain them financially?
Well, educate and allow more resources, or better use of resources. We have the bid already, which does a great job. They do a great amount of advertising and educating the community about what exists in the town, in downtown. But there needs to be a quality resources with that. And we also, I personally think that we need to look a little bit more on how dollars are being used in downtown area. We spend, yearly, we spend thousands of dollars through our, through our bid development for to create downtown businesses. And there are some that are there, and there are some are not. And so maybe it's also looking at where those incentives are coming from, that, you know, looking at the plans a little bit more of the business plans that are coming to the bid and saying, well, you know, we're, we're being asked this much to give this much for this program. What merits, you know, what, what benefits is this going to have, and how do we know that this is going to last at that time? I think part of that is, we don't know, if a, if a business invests in downtown and they, and they get assistance from the bid, we don't know how long they're going to last. And we don't know what actually is going to keep them there. So part of that has to come from the government already, from the city, in the sense of the bid.
I've read the Titan on both of you, and, and both of you have said at different points that the fact that Brian Bain wasn't running, you know, gave an open seat. I kind of got from that that if Brian Bain was running, you people wouldn't be running? Is that a safe assumption or not?
I would say I would never want to replace council member Bain on the council. He's a very great, he's a very progressive person. The City of Oshkosh has been lucky to have him over the last two terms. And if he was seeking reelection, I would not do anything to try and get him out of office.
I like Brian Bain a lot. I think he's, I think he's been really good on the council. I think there's, there's things that I definitely haven't agreed with him on the past, and I've been very candid about that, so. But, I mean, when you think about it strategically, when you're running a campaign, you want to look at, well, what are, really, what are my chances?
Right.
You know, so I'm going to be honest and say, you know, yeah, that opened it up a little bit.
Sure. The chances of beating either council member King or Palmieri are more difficult.
Yeah. I mean, the chances, the chances of beating an incumbency, you know, are a little bit high, you know, a little bit lessened from, from a person who's just running, you know, just a regular candidate, so.
That's true of any office you're running for, I mean.
So truly, to be honest, really, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. You keep saying you're for open government. Are you for open government?
Yes, I think that people should be interacting with their government.
Are you for open government?
You betcha.
I'm for, I mean, what, what, I mean, that's like apple pie. I mean, what, what's your point? Do we not have open government?
I, it depends on how you look at it. I mean, so just, I'm not going to spend very much time on this. If you were to ask the group of people who are working on, on the culling issue of deer, they would say that our government has not been forthright with information in regards to what the council used on that decision. So, meaning that they didn't, that the council and the neighborhood and the people of Oshkosh didn't have access, full access, to information that was being used. So that's, access to information is the premise of what decisions should be made on in our city government, in any government.
So you don't think the discussion about moving to the culling of the deer was an open process?
Just, I believe that it was an open process. It was held in a public forum.
More than once?
More than once. But, and it's, bring it back to the information of what was used to make the decision. We were, people were told that there was, that there were accidents, deer to car accidents. Where is the proof on that? We're supposed to take that as verbatim from, from the, from the staff and from, from the city manager that this has happened. And I'm not going to sit here and say that the chance of that not happening, it's a very good chance that it happened. But if they're going to say this is a safety issue, then information needs to be used to back that up. And you have, you have members of the city that say that, but then there's nothing given out to the councilors in regards to that, so.
Let's get even further. Let's say that you guys are both on the council, and it comes back in April to continue the culling of the deer. How do you vote, and how do you vote?
My vote would be no. I do not feel it necessary. After talking to residents of the area, I actually have a close friend whose parents live right on the corner of Nap and Osborne, and they said they have never had any issues with the deer over there. Personally, when I need to access Highway 41, I usually will use South Park Avenue to access, and I've never had a problem. I've only ever seen deer on the opposite side of the fence from South Park Avenue, so.
How about you?
I truly don't see it as a problem in the city.
I don't, I would, I would, I would vote against it. I believe that if, if the herd is too large, I believe that we can use more humane methods to, to remove the deer. So, simple as that.
And I picked on Bob on one, and I'm going to pick on you on one. Today on the Titan, Travis, you quoted it saying, first I want to know if this is a direct quote or a regular quote, you said students are unrepresented on, on the campus. And you said that you felt that the three of the council members that were associated with the university, quote, "can't really represent today's student body." Is that a direct quote?
I think it has, was, when paraphrased. I actually did read that today, and I was like, well, I don't think that's exactly how I worded it, but.
Okay, well, I'll give you the option on that to begin with. Do you think that Tony Palmieri and Jess King aren't representing the campus as members of the common council?
I do feel that councilperson King, you know, being an alumni and involved on campus as she is, she does a great job representing the university. And even a small part of the students, as well as Tony Palmieri, or council member Palmieri, he, being a professor on campus, he, he knows what the university needs and what's good for the relations, as well as council member Burke Tower, also being a dean of students on campus, he.
Dean of college of business.
Dean of college of business. He has the familiarity between the campus and the city as well. All three of them do relate to the university, but none of them relate to the students. The students, you know, we're different than the university. We are, we're part of the university, but we're part of the city as well.
Then my question, what do you want to do on the council that Palmieri and King and Tower aren't?
And Bain.
And Bain, who aren't, you know, what are you going to do different on the council to represent students? What are you going to do?
Oh, being a student myself, I have the ability to talk to that part of the constituency a little more closely and help represent their needs more than somebody who lives, you know, a few miles away from the campus. You know, people who live right there in that neighborhood have the ability to see what is going on, what is needed, what changes need to be made, and talk directly to the constituents there, where it seems like the council members currently just kind of segregate us and view us as unimportant votes in the races.
So what are they saying to you then, Travis, about, you know, what, what their needs are, or, you know, what they feel they need representation on that they're not getting?
Well, excuse me. It seems like the students aren't being represented in the sense of, things like, a lot of students who come here will leave their cars at home if they come from cities, you know, outside of Oshkosh. And if a college student with tuition rates going up, a lot of students are having to hold jobs now. It seems like all the college-type jobs are the students, that the students would be holding, are all out on Highway 41 in that area. Our bus system here quits at 6 o'clock. I mean, no college student can have classes from 8 to 3 o'clock, and then go to work and expect to make money and be home by 6 o'clock, because that's when the buses are, the city transit is done running.
And so, well, I'm sorry, but I guess just as a follow-up to that, how, how could the city council help bring their cars here? I guess I don't, I don't understand the.
The city council wouldn't necessarily have to help bring their cars here, but they could help them with things like public transportation, so that they can get around the city a little better to do shopping for things like food. The nearest grocery store to the campus is the Pick 'n Save on Jackson Street on the north side. I mean, that's a long walk, especially in the winter months for somebody who lives in the Sel Scott dorms on the corner of Wisconsin and Algoma.
Okay, so you'd like to see public transportation hours maybe expanded?
Expanded, for sure.
Okay, all right.
Especially, I mean, not just to help college students, but to help working-class people in general. Typically, in a city the size of Oshkosh, the people who are using the bus system the most are the lower-income people who are holding two or three jobs to help make ends meet, and I think that would really help them as well.
Why are they not bringing their cars here? Is it because there's a big parking issue? Because I know they've built a parking garage and, you know, things like that. I mean, is, is the parking the main reason they're not bringing their cars?
Some of them just feel that they may not need them. Other ones do, it does have to do with parking. The permits are expensive. They're upwards of around $80 a month, depending on the lot you get. And you're not guaranteed a spot, so you could come home one night after work and not have anywhere to park. And then you have to park on a city street, which is illegal from 2 to 5, unless you get police permission, and you're only allowed to do that three times per month.
Unless you buy a permit.
Unless you buy the $10 street permit. So, I mean, it just seems like there aren't a lot of options, and for most people, it does seem more realistic to leave their cars at home, but it doesn't then make it harder for them to go back home to see their families, and, you know, puts more of a financial burden on their parents as well.
To turn that around a little bit, though, at this point, students are actually getting a larger benefit in regards to public transportation than, than, than probably other, other, other people, than, than more, you know, than taxpayers, residents already in the City of Oshkosh, because our city has already provided an enhancement of public transportation directly to the students, which is already paid for by the students. So, I mean, in the sense that they've expanded hours on three different routes to take place after 6 o'clock, which is to enhance employment, access to, to, to employment, access to stores and such like that. The public can take part in that, yes, but that is actually a perk that has been pretty much given to the students, partially because you're paying for it also. So the good thing about that is that that's being used to look at the possibility of enhancing services around the city. So the idea that public transportation may be available a little bit past 6 o'clock is a really great idea, and it's exciting to hear that our city is thinking about it. What we need to do is make sure that, that those services, and what, what they're talking about now is actually cutting off one day, or some time on the weekends, and some routes would not be functioning all the time after 6, and such. So transportation is, is an issue dear, dear to me. And so I think it's great that they've expanded, but at the same time, when you sit here and say that students don't have access to that, they do. And the city went above and beyond to make sure that they had access to that.
Are you referring to the extended service, the 6 to 10?
Yes.
Buses that go to the Jackson Street Pick 'n Save and to the frontage roads?
Yes.
Those were actually, those are not city-sponsored, they're university-sponsored, they're paid for out of our segregated fees.
Yeah, and I stated that.
Okay.
So I stated that, but it's contracted through the city. The city has their hands in it.
Yes, yeah. I'm actually on that committee. I'm a senator on campus, and I am on the Titan Transit Committee. The city, we do have a city representative who comes to all of our meetings, but it is university-funded, and we're contracted with Colbison, who's hosting it with us.
Well, as long as we're talking about committees and so forth, now, have you, Travis, ever served on any city board or commission?
No, I've never sat on a city committee.
All right. And you ran for county board, was it last year?
Yep, last spring. I ran against incumbent Kathy Lennon.
Okay, all right. And you serve on a committee, correct?
Yes. I have, I currently, I currently serve as the vice chair on the Energy and Environment Council, or Advisory Council for the City of Oshkosh. I am, I'm the board of, I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the Winnebago County Literacy Council. Through my work at the Arc of, Arc Winnebago County Disability Association, I've worked on transportation issues, sit on the Specialized Transportation Council for the county and such, and so that's a small list of what I've been, of what I've worked on. That's kind of the recent list.
Can I go back to Energy and Environment for a minute?
Sure.
I ran your attendance record on that committee for a year, and you're.
Bob's truckling.
You're absent a lot. There were 10 monthly meetings last year, you missed three of them. There were two subcommittee meetings, and you missed one. And then Monday, the meeting of this week, when they were dealing with 2009 plans, you left halfway through the meeting. Gee, you know, for people out there saying, he's got a minus 33% attendance record at one city committee, how is he going to serve on the common council? What's your response to that?
My response is that, well, to be honest with you, my, 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 my life is committed to my family. So my, and if work gets, if work says that I need to do this, then my, the reasons, to give it to you frankly, the reason why, why I missed those meetings is because of work. And I need to work. I mean, when it comes down to, in these times, if I have to choose work over a council, not, not a city council meeting, but a committee meeting, I have, that's, I will, I will have to choose that. Because I, my family comes first, and making sure that I have a paycheck and that, that all that stuff takes place is absolutely vital to my, to my life.
You know what my honest response to that is? You're too busy to be on the common council. You've got all of these other activities, you've got family and work, and you've already admitted those are your priorities.
Well, I think that's everyone's priority, Dan. I think family is everyone's priority, so. Do I believe I can, I can balance all that all? Yeah, I'm a busy person. I know a lot of people, I get a lot of stuff done. Just because I miss a couple, a couple committee meetings doesn't mean that, that I'm not going to be an effective legislator for, for our city.
Well, if I can just, and I don't want it to be picking on you, Bob, but.
Bring it on.
You know, I mean, you know, say there's a council meeting on a Tuesday night, and you have a work commitment, and I, and I fully respect, you know, your commitment to work. I mean, we all, as you said, we all have to work. We all have to pay our bills and, and keep, you know, a roof over our head and food on the table and, and heat in the, heat in the house, you know, especially this winter. But, you know, if there's a council meeting and a work commitment, you know, where will your loyalty, I guess, lie?
Well, my, my loyalty will lie in, in, if I'm elected to the council in April, I have an ultimate service to, to, to live up to. And I believe that if I'm elected, I, the people have spoken, and so I owe them the utmost to make it to every single meeting. And I believe at that point, you know, if I'm elected in April, I have to look at my life, my, my schedule with my family, and I have to look at my work schedule and say, all right, here's the deal, Tuesday nights are out. You know, the, if, you know, even if it's, you know, no matter what, I mean, council meetings have been going extremely late lately. And so that's, that, if, if elected in April, I will give the ultimate commitment to, to doing what I need to do to represent the City of Oshkosh. I will clear my schedule for that. I don't, I really don't believe that because I'm, have my hands in a little bit of stuff that I think is, what I'm doing is great for the City of Oshkosh, that because I missed a couple meetings here, that, that is a reason for me not to be elected. I think that my background, my history shows that I care a great deal about my community, and I'm willing to work with citizens, and I'm willing to work with elected officials, and I'm willing to work with nonprofits and business owners all across the city. I am known for that. And if I'm a little bit busy, that's just the way life is. If I'm elected in April, my commitment is to my city, and my commitment will be to clear my schedule for those Tuesday nights and whatever committee meetings I have assigned to.
Can I just make one suggestion, then?
You sure can.
Clear your schedule for the E and E meetings, because that's a commitment to the city, too. That's, that's an important.
Yeah, and you're running on sustainability. And this is a sustainability committee, and you're blowing off like, oh, I just missed a few meetings. But you, I mean, this, this is, this is the first year of this committee, and I know sustainability is really dear to your heart. And then you just blow it off like, well, I just missed a few meetings.
I'm, I'm not blowing it off. It's extremely important, but I also, when I think about sustainability, I also think about my own personal life, so.
Okay.
Good answer.
I mean, in all reality, I think every voter would be able to relate with me in the sense that work and family comes first, so.
All right. Well, Travis, you don't get a free pass here.
My turn.
Yeah. Why is it that you have not served on any board or commission in the city? I mean, you know, we always need people, you know, to step up to the plate and, and give a few hours of their time on a monthly basis?
Right. I've never actually had the opportunity present itself to me to serve on a city committee, but I am a part of the Winnebago County Tobacco Free Coalition, which is a, a committee within the county. That's something that's really important to me, or the main focus is on tobacco education to youth and tobacco prevention with youth. And that's something that's obviously very important, just, just for an overall healthy America and healthy youth, so.
Sure. Well, I would encourage you to go to the city's website and fill out an application for a board or commission. We're always looking for people. I know we need people on, on the Board of Appeals, which I, I chair. Every one of them needs, you know, good, smart people to step up to the plate and, and give a little to their, to their community. So I'd encourage you to do that.
I'll do that when I get home. Does that mean they're going to give me a recommendation?
I don't have much to say about it. It's up to the mayor, but I would just like to see more people apply. You know, it's, it's, it doesn't take that much time and effort, and it's, I think it's a tremendous way to give back and to learn about the city as well. But since you mentioned Tobacco Free Coalition, you know, Fond du Lac has now put their smoke-free ban into effect, or their, their smoking ban into effect in, in all businesses in, in the city. Is that something that you guys think we need to be doing here in Oshkosh? I mean, we've got the smoking ban in, in, you know, restaurants, but is that something that we maybe need to expand? Do we need to expand it statewide, both? You know, what do we need to do here?
I honestly feel that a statewide ban is the best solution. It doesn't, right now, we kind of have a patchwork of local bans. I mean, as you see, even especially up like in the Fox Cities Appleton area, Appleton has one ban, and every city around them and township around them has a different type of ban, creating kind of this unlevel playing field, is what it's been called. Do I think it needs to be statewide? Yes. If it came to a vote citywide, would I support it? Yes, I would. I do feel that it is what's in the best interest of the citizens and the health of the workers in the city.
Okay. Bob?
I had this issue come up to me in 2005, and I would, I would agree with a citywide ban on smoking.
Okay, all right.
Let's talk about economic development a little bit.
Sure.
You know, Bain was often a 4-3 vote on, on more development than less development. And so just hypothetically, let's say you guys are, are on the council. Can you kind of get a feel where you're at on development? We could start with, with TIF districts, whether you think they've been overused or not overused, and then maybe talk a little bit about Marion Road development and where you're at on that.
Sure.
I think, because I think for a lot of people, this will be a big issue in 2009.
For, for me, I believe that there, I believe that our TIFs in our city are, are used way too much as a, as a development tool. I think that we need to step back on the use of them and to really look at what the definition is in the state statute in regards to what is developable and/or undevelopable and what is blighted, because I believe that's where the, the, the range of ideas kind of lives within Oshkosh and TIFs and such. And so I believe that TIFs are a very beneficial tool to our community if they're used correctly and they fit, and they fit the state statute.
Where do you think they have not been used correctly in Oshkosh?
Well, one always would go back to the exclusive company TIF that kind of sat dormant, where they received the, the TIF for, they, they said they were going to move, and it took them 10 years to move and, and such.
At least.
At least 10, I think it was more, I think it was 12 years, actually. So, and, you know, but as soon as they moved, that, that TIF became a great tool. So, I mean, it's, you know, I think sometimes, you know, with TIFs, there has to be a little learning curve in how they're, you know, and how they're implemented and such like that. And I think that it's hard to have a learning curve when we implement so many of them.
What about the Shopko building? That's not a blighted area?
It's not a blighted area. I actually, I'm, I'm on record saying that, I mean, looking at that area, there are two new buildings that have been brought up in that area in the last five years, and they have received no city support except for endorsement that they should be there. You know, and so that to me tells that it doesn't fit the definition of blighted or undevelopable. Um, and so I would not have supported the TIF for Shopko, even though I believe that we need to have that type of commerce on the north side.
Let's go to you for TIF, then we'll go back to the river.
Um, I think TIFs are a great thing, and I think they've been utilized fairly responsibly in the city of Oshkosh here, especially in the Near East neighborhood. I think the revitalization that we've had going on over there, bringing those homes back, bringing that neighborhood back to the city, it's been great, especially with the things like dumpster days. You know, just a small thing, small contribution from the city, really helped clean up those neighborhoods. Um, as for the Shopko TIF, I do not think we should be using our TIF dollars to support large corporations like Shopko. I mean, like Bob said, they are important to the city. It's important that we have those here. But I'd really rather see our TIF money stay local and help the businesses downtown and the small family-owned businesses around the city, instead of us sending our money up to the corporate office in Green Bay.
I, you know, maybe I'm not as versed on this. I didn't realize that Near East was, I know that, that there's a portion of it that's, that's part of a TIF. But, um, the, the neighborhood itself technically can't be used as a TIF. Um, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a residential neighborhood.
Right.
So, um, but.
So you're saying there is no TIF money in there?
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't believe, I, there's very little because it sits right on the edge of, 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 of an existing TIF and that's right off of downtown.
Right.
So, um, so very little of that TIF would actually be used to enhance the Near East neighborhood.
Right, and I understand that. I'm sorry, I thought part of your question was the revitalization of the neighborhood.
Oh, that's okay, we'll get to that, but, but let's, just for record, there is.
I was confused.
There is no TIF money in, in the, in the, in your question. Let's go to River Development. Let's say that the, the third or fourth plan bombs and, and you're, you're faced. What, what would you like to see in there? And what would you support and not support?
What I would like to see is I would like to see some sort of development that supports sustainable growth within our community. And that means it would, it would have to be, um, a, a business or a project that enhances the quality of life of, of taxpayers. So, within a region. So, say that region, there, I mean, even in the downtown region, we don't have a grocery store. So, I know that even though studies have said and, and said that grocery stores really don't like that site, I'm using it as, as an example. That would be a type of development that would be beneficial to citizens of Oshkosh. It would also put jobs, hopefully, working class, with large wage paying jo, not large wage, but, you know, living wage paying jobs, um, back into the, into the, into the city roles. Um, and it would also have to enhance the natural beauty of our river already. So it also would have to be connected to the Riverwalk, which it would, it already would be because it's the way that the city's been developing it. But that's the type of stuff that I'm looking for in development is, is, is something that gives out needs and enhances people's lives. Retail does that, but only so much, you know? But I, it really needs to be something that I believe can be beneficial to people within the region of where, of what's taking place in the development and creates more jobs and creates a tax base, so.
Well, I, I agree with both of you that a grocery store down there is probably, um, something that we need to see. And it's interesting that they keep saying, oh, a grocery store wouldn't be decent down there. Well, they're not getting any response to, um, tenants. Yeah, well, a number of things. But certainly, they're not getting any response to an office complex. And yet they keep kind of driving home, we gotta have an office building down there. I mean, they're backing away from that a little bit now, but they haven't entirely ruled it out.
No.
And, you know, and yet this grocery store concept just sort of falls by the wayside and nobody wants to bother pursuing it. So I'm glad to hear you guys both say that it's something that you would support.
I think it's the perfect location for it, to be honest with you. Um, and, and there's, but there's also a side of me that feels that if the city and developers can't get their act together for that site, let it sit. I mean, in, in all reality, if you look across, if you look across the river, you see the Jeldwin factory, which is great. It has, you know, high-paying jobs and everything, except if we're talking about development of our river and, and the natural beauty. You know, maybe that's one of the challenges to, to not being able to find a viable project for that spot. It's because it's not in the most aesthetically pleasing position at this point in, in the development of our, of our river, you know? And also the fact is that all along our river, we shouldn't necessarily be worrying about building brand-new buildings, but also using existing buildings. That, and, and trying to sustainably work them into, into our, into our Riverwalking and into our riverfront.
Okay.
What we need is, um, we need a developer to come forward who has a very, um, strong idea of their own and that they feel very confident in. That's very important. He or she needs to feel very confident in their idea for it to be successful over there. I agree with Bob that I do not think retail is the answer. We have empty storefronts all over the city. We don't need another strip mall sitting empty, or, you know, sitting with two or three stores in it and the rest of it sitting empty. That would be irresponsible. It'd also be irresponsible for the city to move forward with a plan just for the sake of moving forward with a plan and not letting the land sit there any longer. It's not hurting anything by sitting there.
I agree.
So, I mean, let's find the best option for that site, whatever it may be, when he or she comes forward with the idea. And then the city should move forward with it at that time, whenever that happens to be.
How much longer should we continue to give this, uh, this third set of developers to get their act together, if you will? Not to suggest that they don't have their act together, but, you know, bring something forward. Bring something forward that can be brought to fruition, you know?
I, I, I feel that, that if, when they bring something forward and if it doesn't fit this time around, or if, or if nothing works out this time around, it's just time to take a break on that, on that location. I believe that citizens of Oshkosh either want something that's going to be beneficial to them, or they're willing to wait a little bit on that. And I've, I, 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 I don't know about Travis, but I've been knocking on some doors and I've been getting, getting some literature out there and talking to citizens. And, and they're upset about a lot of things. But they're not absolutely, you know, dead-set on development happening in that location right now. So, you know, I, you know, so it leads me to think, is, is this something that's coming from, you know, from the groundswells of the city? Or is it something that's coming from the fact that we have a beautiful piece of open land that people and our city sees that, oh, it should be developed because it adds money to the tax base and it, and it, and it may offer some resources and needs and such. But I think in a sense, we need to step back. When you look at that and say, well, what is absolutely beneficial? Do some more surveys and studies around that site and around the needs of Oshkosh. So, and the city has been doing, actually, I've given them credit because they, they did a pretty good survey in, in 2008 of asking people, you know, well, how do you want your taxpayer, your tax dollars to be spent? And that's, that's located right on the city website, so.
And now if they'll just listen to what the people are saying? Because I think far too often, you, you seek out these opinions, you do these studies, you do these surveys, and then you just kinda take all the answers and you just throw them into a pile, whether it's a file drawer or the garbage can, you know? Nothing gets done with them and people proceed with their own preconceived ideas about what people want. Travis, did you have anything else to add on the riverfront development?
No, like I said before, I just do feel that, this, I think the citizens and taxpayers of Oshkosh would prefer to wait and have something done with that site that, like Bob said, would be very beneficial to them. As opposed to us just quickly, you know, let's get something on here so that we get something on the tax books.
But the quick fix leads us all the way back to the, I think it's the 100 North Main building, which is now finally starting to come to, come to fruition. But that took, that took 10, 10-plus years for that to happen too.
And that was a TIF also?
Yep. And, and so where we, I mean, that, and the repercussions of that experience are still hitting very close to home because of what's happened financially with that, with that site. So, um, I think it's to the benefit of the taxpayers to, to wait on it, so.
Okay.
I'm thinking park when you kinda say, let's wait. Are you thinking that or not necessarily? Not that permanent?
Well, I'm, 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 I am of the school of thought that believes that we don't have enough open space and, and parks in, in our, in our community. Because I believe that they, they are great, um, quality-of-life enhancements to our, to our community and to our, to our kids, so.
So you would be supportive of just turning it into green space or a large part of it into green space or a small part of it?
I would, I would be, I would definitely be in support of, of some of it becoming, um, green space. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not sold on like a percentage of it at all or anything. I would like it to be put into the concept of it, so.
You don't think that we have enough waterfront green space already with some of the parks that we have? Whether it be Rainbow Park, Menominee Park, the county park?
Well, if we're, if we're talking about, if we're talking about specifically about our river, it's, it's the vein of our city. And I, and I think, I think having, um, bike trails and having parks along the vein of our city that people can, you know, come down and, and do is, is just absolutely just an enhancement of, of, of the, of the natural beauty of, of what our community is, so.
Well, a bike trail, sure. But, I mean, to, to remove, so you would be supportive of removing even a small section of it off the tax rolls to turn it into some kind of green space?
Sure. I'm not, I'm, I'm perfectly fine being okay on, on the record for that, so.
Travis?
Well, I would say a park's not a horrible idea. I mean, statistically, we do not have enough parks in the city as is. I, I guess the only problem I really see with that is its location isn't really ideal for a park. I mean, I know there's apartment complexes going up over there now, but they seem to be hosed.
They hope.
They hope, they hope. And then there's ones that are a little bit further down, um, Pearl Avenue. But those aren't hosed by many families. Most of that is hosed by college students or people who have just graduated and are still living in the community. So, I mean, it just doesn't, in theory, I think a river park does sound great and Rainbow Park is beautiful. But I just, it just doesn't seem too ideal for just the neighborhood kids to come and play.
Well, I'm not sure it's necessarily just about the neighborhood either. I think it's also about, um, you know, if, you know, the types of businesses that we end up putting in there. I, I think, uh, I think a park enhances any aspect, whether it's a neighborhood or whether it's, whether it's a developed little mall or, or even a, you know, factory. Um, I, 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 I think it's, I, I think it's just a wonderful enhancement of, of life, no matter where it's situated. I think the, the problem comes with it is that we have too many parks that are with, in our inner cities that are just, that are gems, that not enough people use. And, but we're talking about one of our most viably-used spots in our city for the enhancement of green space is our riverfront. And I think it's just a great spot for it. I mean, and even environmentally, you know, and aesthetically thinking, it's, it's, it makes sense to me, so.
Alright. Um, one thing that has kind of tied in with this, um, riverfront development concept is this office building that we've talked a little bit about tonight. And of course, the Chamber had wanted the city to, to buy its current location and with the proviso that they would then move into this yet-to-be-constructed office complex, this Class A complex. That didn't happen. But, and it, and it may not ever come back to the council, but it may come back before the council at some point. If it would, um, I'd like to know where you each stand on purchasing the Chamber building so that they can move into a then-proposed office complex on the river.
That's a, it's a no-brainer for me. I would not support, the, I would not support that. If they choose to, to move into a building, that's their choice. But I, I don't believe that, uh, that it would be prudent of our, of, of, of our city council to purchase a building for them, for them to be able to move.
Okay, Travis?
You know, I have to agree with Bob completely on that. It would be just completely irresponsible of the city to do something like that. There's no need for that, for that type of development. It's very irresponsible is the best word for it.
It doesn't make sense in any way. There's no, you can't look at it with any.
It does to them.
I don't think it makes sense to the taxpayers. I don't think the taxpayers would see their money being spent properly.
And that's who's footing the bill. Um, one other question real quick before we move on to something else. You know, things along the, along the riverfront, so we've got the Leech Amphitheater. Now, those new rates under the city's leadership, if you will, in operation have gone into effect, or that they will be going into effect. They were set and approved the other night by the, by the common council. Do you each agree with the rate structure as it was set and approved? And along with that, is it time that we start putting a facilities charge on tickets for events at the Leech? Travis, why don't you go first this time?
I would say that the ticket prices, they, we should be doing that, depending on the show that people are seeing. If it's a very big-name person, that some, it's gonna cost, you know, thousands of dollars to bring somebody in. I mean, we have to recover some of that cost somehow. But it is nice to keep the, the ticket prices as low as possible for the taxpayers, since it is a taxpayer-funded facility.
So what would you think for a facilities charge then, you know?
I guess it would completely depend on the show. I mean, it'd be really hard to say. I guess it'd depend mostly on how much it's gonna cost to bring in whatever the act is.
Though, it won't, it won't work that way. You'd have to, you'd have to have a set uniform fee within that. It would have to be the same, the same fee.
I think that is what most venues charge.
Per, per artist and such. And, and it'd be great if it worked that way a little bit, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And, and I'm cutting you off, so I just wanted to interject there. So you were still going.
I guess what I'd mostly like to see is have somebody in charge, specifically in charge of the Leech Amphitheater, who's a part of the city and not independently contracted out, who can make decisions like this for us and, you know, give advice to the council on what they feel would be the good, the best acts to bring in, what would be the best prices to charge the taxpayers.
You're aware now that that has been given to the Parks for this coming season?
Well, it's been given to the Parks, but he has, you know, the Parks Director has other responsibilities as well.
So you think someone in the city just to oversee that alone?
Specifically the Leech.
Specifically the Leech. And maybe, maybe that person could work underneath the Parks Director or with the Parks Director. But somebody who could focus specifically on that structure.
Okay. Bob, what about the facilities charge there and the, and the rate structure as it was approved?
Well, I, for me, the, the facilities charge would have to really be kind of looking at who's, who's using, who's, or who's coming to our shows. I mean, really, if it's our taxpayers that are, that are spending a good amount of money and buying the ticket and coming into our shows, and it's the majority of them, I probably wouldn't agree with it. But I think if it's, if it's tourist dollars, tourist dollars coming in from other communities, I'm, I'm really comfortable probably doing that. Maybe there's, you know, if, if it's 50/50, I think, you know, maybe we go for it. I'm not absolutely dead-set on a, on a, on a facility fee. I could go either way on it, so.
Well, Waterfest is, is probably one of the biggest users of the facility.
Yeah, so that would be, so, um, which leads, actually leads me in, into, into some of my, my thoughts about it is that, is that I believe that the Leech is, is a public, is a public place. And that it should also be treated like a public place. In the sense that if there is, um, a, like a nonprofit organization that is holding a fundraiser there or is, is benefiting, its services are benefiting the community and they're looking to raise, raise funds for their programs or raise funds for, for something, that they should have a reduced fee. And I bring this up because when it was under PMI, their fee was a thousand dollars. Now, under the city Parks Department, it's now 1,500. And so to me, that shows that there's, that there's a disconnect about what's, what the nonprofit community really has and offers and builds and creates and changes in our community and how hard it is to do it with not a lot of money. You can't really, I mean, so it's, you can tell that I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty forward about my support of nonprofit work. And I, and I feel that, that, that fee is, is just way too high on nonprofits.
Well, that was expressed at the council meeting. I think the fee structure only passed on a four-three vote. So your objections were certainly echoed.
And, and Tom Stefani has said that, you know, he'll, he'll look at the different things and, and there's going to be little niches, I think, that different groups or family functions or whatever will, will fall into. But what about a facilities charge then for Waterfest?
You know, to, I, I would not, I would not agree with a, with a, with a facilities charge for Waterfest. Partly because Waterfest has been going on in our community for years. And I, and they're a nonprofit organization, um, and I believe that they're, that they, that they have an extreme benefit in our community, so.
So if they're the biggest user of the Leech.
Which also means that they.
And you're not gonna charge them, then who would you charge?
Then you can't charge anyone else.
Well, that's a very good point. And I guess what it, what it comes down, what it, what it comes down to is that, you, you stopped me.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. I mean, you know, and, and here's the thing, let me just interject here. I know I'm not running and you are, but, uh, uh, let me just, let me just explain. It wouldn't be the nonprofit that's paying the facility charge. It's gonna be the, the ticket holder. And, I mean, I don't think that someone who's coming to see Alice Cooper or the Gin Blossoms or whoever, I don't think that they're not gonna come just because they have to pay an extra 50 cents. I mean, people all over the state pay facilities charges, whether it's the PAC, whether it's the RASH, whether it's the Bradley Center in Milwaukee. You know, I don't care where you go, you pay a facilities charge and half the time or better, you don't even know you're paying it. I mean, it's just kind of built in and there it is. So give that some thought, Bob.
I will.
Alright, let's move on.
It was, it was a question that I was not expecting, so.
Well, that's good, we won on that expected question. I thought you're, you know, um, I wanna talk about money a little bit. And, and this is just a little game and if it's being unfair, do you guys know what the city budget is for 2009 in dollars?
No.
Exact dollars, no.
Millions, you wanna guess? What, I mean, this is, this is the operating budget for 2009. What, what, how much do you think the city budget is for 2009? Hundred million? Ninety million? Eighty million?
No, it's, it's over a hundred million.
Okay, what do you think, Travis?
You know, I'm, wouldn't really know how to.
Okay, it's 64 million. Okay, alright. Now, property tax bills, I don't, maybe you pay one. My guess is you don't. Who are the main recipients of these property tax bill that people pay every year that owns property? Where does the property tax money go? Can you name two or three of the major recipients of a property tax bill that's paid in Oshkosh? Who gets the money?
School district.
Okay, that's one. Travis, name another one.
Uh, the state of Wisconsin, Winnebago County.
Okay, that's a little one. Name me a big one. We got schools, what else? What are you running for?
Uh, the city.
Okay, city is another one. And then what would be the third one? Or county? Okay?
Yeah.
And the, the technical county.
Yeah, 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 you got, okay, now.
So, well, so, yeah, would be actually university and.
Alright, which, which of these agencies had the highest tax increase for 2009? City, county, or schools?
The highest.
The highest increase.
The highest increase?
Yeah.
My guess would probably be the school district.
Okay, the answer is the city. 3.1 percent. Schools went down half a percent.
Really?
Yeah.
That's good news?
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't mean to embarrass you, but I mean, I mean, this is, this is, you know, if you're in city hall this week, people are lined up paying that first installment that was done, I guess, last week on the 31st and the second installment. So, you know, I know young people maybe not quite as involved with property, but this, you know, this is the, this is the complaint every year. You know, the property tax bill. And mine went down, uh, twelve dollars.
Mine rose 10.
Huh?
Mine rose 10.
You really? Okay, yeah, so I don't know what.
You know, and on top of that, Governor Doyle said this is gonna be the lowest increase of property taxes in, that, that, that he's going to put forward. He's talking that, saying that rules are going, only going to raise 10 dollars. Property taxes will raise no more than 10 dollars this year. But I'm. But, I'm, have my hopes that that's true, but...
I also think he thinks the stimulus package is gonna save Wisconsin, and I think that's, that's probably not gonna happen.
It's not gonna save anybody. Let's be real.
Yeah. One other question. You guys both lost, but what are you doing this time that you maybe didn't do last time? What's your strategy? I mean, it's a primary election, probably 10% turnout. What are you doing to campaign, if anything?
Sure. I've been doing a lot of networking within, within organizations and such like that. I've been doing a mix of door-to-door and leafletting, and I've been using my website a lot. My, one of, my, my two main tools is I've been doing some extra advertising, and I've been using Facebook a lot, so...
So, you're kind of aggressively campaigning?
I believe I am, as much as I can.
You understand.
I mean, I have a, I have a family of two, and, you know, and I'm, I'm working as much as I can. And so, that, and the weather has been kind of an inhibitor, in the sense of going door-to-door during the weekend and such. So, my, my door-to-door times has been, you know, strictly the weekends and...
Sure. What position are you in the ballot?
I am, believe I am sixth, number one here.
Number one here.
So, that's about a 2% or 3% advantage. I mean, so what are you doing, if anything?
The door-to-doors, those are always important. You have to have the voter interaction, just going to places that you find voters, and just so you can, last, two weekends ago, I went downtown and I talked to all the business owners individually. I had a, a letter I was gonna mail them, letting them know who I was, and I decided, you know, it would really be more personal for me to go downtown, drop this off, and individually talk to all these people. That way, if they have questions, I'm right here for them. Another way is trying to motivate the student vote on campus. A student vote was very low last April, and I'm hoping that the students will see and realize that the, you know, kind of roll off of the Obama excitement that we saw in the fall, and we could maybe get a high turnout yet again.
I wish you luck with that student vote.
Yeah, Bob probably tried. It's tough.
You know, it's, it's really challenging. I'm, I'm a graduate of UWO, so, and I've done, I ran as a student also.
Yeah.
And so, and I've been, in the sense of running voting drives on that campus, and it's extremely challenging, very disheartening and such, and I, I just, just to be honest with you, I hope you do, I hope you get it. I hope you get those people out. Anytime students vote more, it's going to change the message and the view of our community. So, I hope that you're successful.
And I agree wholeheartedly, and that's why I realize, you know, as much as it'd be nice to be able to spend all my time motivating the student vote, it's, it's not feasible. I mean, I cannot spend all my time doing that. There's 65-plus residents in the city that all need to be addressed and all need to be talked to, and, you know, you can't just focus and segregate yourself to one small portion of the city.
I think, I think one thing that I have, that Travis doesn't have also, but Travis, you got a little bit, because you've run before, too. I mean, and I'm born and raised, and so, my, my name is a very strong name in the community. I mean, my great-great uncle used to serve on the council. So, when I'm knocking on doors and such, people really connect with, with the name because it's been around for so long. And so, that, that helps me out a lot, too, in the, in the fact that, you know, my grandfather had 11 brothers and sisters, so it's a big family.
There's a big Peschel vote coming.
So, I wouldn't say that. Maybe in April, in April, when I make it past the primary...
The waiting, huh?
Yeah.
Why don't we do this? You both mentioned your websites, and we're starting to, you know, run out of time here a little bit. Why don't you each give your website address real quick? What is it?
Sure. Mine is just www.bobpeschel.com.
Okay. Travis?
And mine is www.travis-swanson.com.
Okay. So, bobpeschel.com and travis-swanson.com.
TravisSwanson.com was taken. I couldn't have it.
Who took it? I mean, obviously, a guy by the name of Travis Swanson.
Or, or you, you didn't buy it right away, and then some other company came up and snatched it up on you.
No, I don't think so.
A lot of companies do do that, though, so... Okay, good. The stormwater management and flooding issues, that's been a big thing with stormwater, you know, management fees just going up here at the last council meeting, I think it was approved. I think you both spoke at the candidate's forum that, you know, you didn't think that those fees were out of line.
Yep. Not at all. No, I believe we need to update our infrastructure. And the great thing, one of the great things about the stormwater fee is that it's also a sustainable fee. It's a progressive fee in the sense that it, it taxes on, I can't remember the word again, the, the amount of land that, of which has runoff on. I'll think of it in a second.
Impervious surface.
Impervious. Thank you.
Very good, sure, Deb.
I had it the second I left the forum, actually. It drove me nuts. But, so in that sense, I think it's, I think it's a good fee, because it, it taxes on the amount of impervious, of surface. So, I think that's really good. And it does, it's not a large burden on taxpayers, but also on community, on, on commercial properties also. So, I like that. And at the same time, the fee is also used to enhance water, enhance our waterways and our drinking water. So, I, I find that to be very beneficial. The fact that our, our, our systems, our sewers, our stormwater and sewers is greatly and vastly out of date, needs to be addressed, so...
I completely agree. This is an issue that greatly needs to be addressed because of the flooding we saw last June. It was very tragic. A lot of homes flooded, a lot of personal property memories out on the boulevards. Anybody who watched Legal Women Voters, this would probably sound like pretty much the same spiel to them, but I do feel very strongly on it, is the council, the increase in the fee is only about $14, approximately $14. And the average homeowner is currently paying about $370 per year if they have flood insurance.